It has been moved by Mayor Protem Terbrack and supported by Councilman Kadekell. Are there any corrections, additions? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now we come to the invocation. I see Reverend Brayley here. Please stand for the invocation.
This is a winter psalm of a prayerful pyromaniac. Winter, from your wide mouth, come the wild winds of Arctic cold that swirl about our homes. You come stalking in the snow like a giant prehistoric beast to pound upon our roofs with icy claws. In less technological times, before the days of central heating, Earth's children gathered around a blazing fire to find warmth from your icy breath. They found around those flames of fire another gift, the great blessing of family, the warmth of the circle of companionship, a never-dying firebrand that frightens away the worst beasts that haunt the human heart. May the family feasts of this winter tide, the holidays and parties and the festivals of inner fire be carnivals of community for us. Make our merry-making family-making, and so be God-making for all of us. God of thermostats and tinderboxes, make of us during this cold winter season your faithful friend and fire-maker. Make of these council members faithful leaders in this city to keep us all warm, to bring us all together, and to keep us safe in this cold of winter. Amen.
Would you please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. At this time, you may speak on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not respond, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of the city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's table. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Oh, very good. Seeing nobody coming to the microphone, then we move on to the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes. Item number one, approval of the minutes, regular meeting of the 33rd City Council on Monday, November 21st, 2011, and the 34th City Council on Monday, November 21st, 2011. Item number two, warrant number 1249, and item number three, resolution R-55-11, matter of approving resolution recognizing the recycler of the year.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved by Councilman Baker and supported by Mayor Protem Terbrack.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to abstain from approval of the regular meeting of the 33rd Council, seeing that I was not a member of it.
Very good. Is there support that allows Councilmember Kadekell to abstain?
Do we need to change our motions, or can we just put that as part of our?
That's a friendly addition.
You can just do a friendly addition.
Is that okay by the maker of the motion?
That is, indeed.
And by the second?
Yes.
Very good. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll then?
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadekell? And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Now we come to the first item on the regular agenda. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number one on the regular agenda?
Recognitions and presentations, matter of any recognition or presentation from the consent agenda.
Thank you. I have asked Councilmember Plaid Onson to read resolution R-55-11.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring the City of Berkeley's Recycler of the Year. Whereas America Recycles Day was November 15th, and whereas recycling household and commercial waste is important for preserving and protecting our natural resources for ourselves and future generations, and whereas recycling and composting rates in the United States have been steadily increasing from 7.7 percent of the waste stream in 1960 to approximately 33 percent in 2009, and whereas recycling creates jobs and promotes the growth of new industries in Michigan and the United States, and whereas the City of Berkeley is a member of the South Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, and Berkeley residents can collect and separate recyclable materials for curbside pickup or direct delivery to the Sacra Recycling Facility, and whereas recycling provides financial benefits to the City of Berkeley because the city saves money on landfill tipping fees, and whereas recycling can help slow climate change and global warming by lowering greenhouse gas emissions associated with manufacturing products from virgin materials, and whereas the City of Berkeley is a proud member of the Clean Cities Initiative and seeks to encourage recycling as one method for reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and whereas the City of Berkeley recognizes the importance of citizen education and involvement in order to increase recycling rates in the city, and whereas the City of Berkeley believes citizens who take the initiative and lead by example in their neighborhoods play an important role in increasing recycling rates and should be honored for their efforts. Now therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that Brian Carlson be recognized as Berkeley Residential Recycler of the Year. Mr. Carlson began his personal recycling efforts even before he obtained an outside recycling bin. He never fails to remind his family and friends to recycle and often retrieves items others have placed in the general refuse in order to recycle them. Mr. Carlson is motivated by a strong desire to make the world a better place for the next generation. And Section 2, that Stephanie Rippey be recognized as Berkeley Student Recycler of the Year. Stephanie, who is 11 years old, tackled her own personal recycling project by making a robot out of a used pop can. She continually encourages her friends and her family to recycle, and she leads by example. Stephanie loves the natural world and hopes to become a marine biologist. And Section 3, that Amici's Pizza be recognized as Berkeley Business Recycler of the Year. This is the second consecutive year Amici's has been recognized. Amici's continues to lead business recycling efforts in Berkeley. Amici's makes extensive use of recycled materials in its business, such as, for example, using flatware and plates made out of recycled material. Amici's also strives to minimize the amount of solid waste it puts into the general waste stream, diverting an ever-increasing amount of waste to recycling facilities. And Section 4, that the city is grateful for the outstanding efforts of Brian Carlson, Stephanie Rippey, and Amici's Pizza to increase recycling rates in the City of Berkeley. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, December 5th, 2011. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Thank you. Are any members that were honored here tonight? Very good. This is Stephanie. Stephanie, would you like to come to the microphone? Well...
This is part of the robot that Stephanie made and kind of broke apart, but it did work at one point.
Very nice.
Wonderful.
Very nice. Well, we thank you, Stephanie, and if you would come up, we can give you your certificate. Would you like to do that?
Sure you would.
Okay.
Right. Congratulations.
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 Thank you.
Good job, Stephanie.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job, Stephanie.
And that's your job.
Congratulations.
Yay.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice job.
Good job.
Good job, Stephanie. Mr. Carlson, is Mr. Carlson here?
I'd just like to say thank you for the council for partnering, and the City of Berkeley for partnering with Sacra to make it so easy to recycle in our community. Thanks to my mom for instilling me from a young age that the importance of recycling, and my family for putting up with me constantly nagging them and pulling their stuff out of the garbage.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Brian.
Good job, thank you.
We're all the same, right?
Thank you very much.
Will do.
Thank you.
I used to do the same thing to her.
Nice work. Good job.
Congratulations.
And is there anybody here from Amici's? Mr. Richardson?
Amici's is honored by the award. It's our intention to present the award on a future occasion to them, but they continue to lead the Berkeley business community and lead by example, and we certainly encourage all Berkeley businesses to emulate the example of Amici's. I'd also like to just let the council know, we do have some Berkeley Environmental Advisory Committee bags here, tote bags, that are made out of recycled material for our winners. And thanks to the city council and you, Mr. Mayor, for passing the resolution. We appreciate your support for environmentally sound policies in Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. And thank you to everybody else. And now, Ms. Prince, would you read item two on the regular agenda?
Motion number M-64-11, matter of appointing Chelsea Ruthenberg to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Motion to approve M-64-11.
It has been moved by Councilmember Kadekell, support by Mayor Protem Terbrack. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Stedman?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadekell?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes. Is...
Mr. Mayor, may I just give a brief summary?
Sure.
I'd just like to introduce to the people of Berkeley, tell them a little bit about Ms. Ruthenberg. She is a sales representative for electrical distributor and manufacturer. She has been a resident of the City of Berkeley for, now, this is a little misleading because I think this is probably since, perhaps maybe her age, I suppose, since 29 years old. And you'll see what I mean when you meet her. But she has been a Berkeley resident for 29 of those years, and she indicates that she is always looking for ways to help make Berkeley a better community. She's been a very active member of the Recreation Department and the Sports and Activities Area, where she's been both a player and a coach. And other information that she feels is important for us to know with regards to this appointment, she indicates that she is a graduate of Berkeley High School. She's also been the head volleyball coach for Berkeley High School. She's been active in numerous recreational activities in Berkeley, and she's also been the Berkeley Parks and Rec Volleyball Camp Director from 2002 to 2010. I know she'd like to say something, a few words. Chelsea? Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Chelsea Ruthenberg. I just wanted to say thank you to the council. I appreciate the vote, and I'm looking forward to working for the city. I just moved back from St. Clair Shores just earlier this year, and I've been speaking with Councilman Kadekell, and he definitely encouraged me to take over his position. I know he's been the president for the past four years. I've heard he's done a great job, so I just wanted to say thank you, and I'm looking forward to working. Thanks.
Thank you, Chelsea.
Thank you.
Ms. Prince, would you please call item number three on tonight's agenda?
Not sure if we voted.
We only voted on the motion.
Yes, we did.
We did.
We did.
We did vote.
We just did it.
A little ahead.
We voted on the motion.
We voted before.
Okay.
We never voted, no?
We voted.
I think we voted and then just didn't. We talked about it after. Maybe that's what happened.
Yes, it did.
Yes, it was.
We voted on it before we got a chance to vote.
Very good. Item number three.
Ordinance number O-5-11, matter of rezoning 1722 11 Mile Road, north side of 11 Mile between Mortenson and Cass, lots 1-2 of the Benjamin Mortenson Garden Home subdivision and lots 251 through 252 of the Benjamin Mortenson Pleasant Garden subdivision, is requesting rezoning from single-family residential district R-1D to office district O-1. Second reading.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance O-511? Motion to approve.
Support.
It has been moved by the Mayor Protem Terbrack and Councilmember Kadekell has supported. Discussion. Mr. Sessa?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just very briefly again, this item is before you again. As you've indicated, this is a second reading. And also, again, just to clarify one more time, that this is simply a rezoning where we are requesting that we go from a single-family residential district R-1D to an office district O-1. And if the city council bears with me just a little bit, as we stated at the last meeting, the Planning Commission did hold a public hearing to discuss this item, and this was done back on October 25th, 2011. They did go through the various rules and regulations of this ordinance, and after much discussion, they did pass a motion to approve this. Now, I know I've gone very, very quickly, but what I'd like to do in order to provide you with a much better summary than I can, I'd like to ask our city planner, Ms. Vanson, to just come before the city council and give us a brief summary of this issue. Thank you, Ms. Vanson.
Good evening. This is the second time you've seen this. This is the second reading, as I said last time, although I know it was really late last time when I was before you. The applicant's coming forward, the intention of the applicant is to put a veterinary office in, and the applicant is here this evening. She was here last time as well. Veterinary offices are a special land use in the office district, which is why when she came forward interested in this piece of property, this is the process. She's got to rezone it first, and then she can ask for a special land use. It was a place of worship. There was some, as I said in my addendum to the report, there was some question as to what was here before, and there are really skinny, skinny building files in the Building Department. Here, as I can figure, there used to be a house just on the eastern end of what is now this one piece of parcel, and the house was demolished in 1972, and it appears it sat vacant for some time. In 1983, the county can tell us some lot combinations occurred, but strangely enough, there is no building permit for the building that is there, which is very unusual, but we have fence permits, so I guess that's something, in 1986 and 1996, but it is unusual to not find any kind of permits of any sort. So I'm sorry that I can't enlighten you on when exactly that building was built and/or whether there was a site plan or anything like that. There's simply nothing on it at all for the Detroit Meeting Room, which is currently the owner. The Planning Commission held a public hearing. They voted 4 to 2 to recommend it for rezoning, and you have the minutes before you, and Berkeley City Code requires that when the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to city council, they look at the existing uses of the property in question in the general area, the zoning classification of the property within the general area in question, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification, the trend of development, if any, in the general area. So if things are really changing, would this be part of that, or is that going to stand in the way of it? And then also the objectives of the current land use plan. And so they looked at all of those things, and they have recommended it to city council. And I can answer any questions, or if I've missed something, please let me know.
Are there any questions for Ms. Vanson? I think that was a 7 to 2 vote on the Planning Commission.
It was actually, I apologize, it was 6 to 2.
6 to 2.
Yes, we had one person that was ill, so I believe it was 6 to 2. Thank you. Yes. You all voted 4 to 2.
That's right.
I knew I had, a 4 was in there somewhere. I apologize.
Okay. Any further discussion on this motion?
It's 7 to 2. I'm sorry, I was just counting. You are correct, Mr. Mayor, it was 7 to 2.
Thank you. Does that mean everybody is ready to cast their vote on this? Are there any thoughts from the audience, from anybody in the audience? Yes?
I prepared a speech. My name is Dr. Nicole Haddis. The discussions thus far have been widely centered around what-if scenarios. I'm also discussing the Planning Commission Nurse Meeting. I can appreciate the need to consider some of the different scenarios that may result in immediate as well as future consequences based on those decisions. However, there are facts that must not be forgotten when making your final decision. Fact number one is, before you, you have a small business owner backed by investors with cash. I have the ability to immediately start improvements on this property. Number two is, it is currently approved for a care facility business. Said another way, this is a completely different scenario than me asking to tear down several houses to build a new commercial building. I am asking for use of a piece of property that is already set up and able to operate as a business and lawfully can if it were the proper type of business. I'm asking to basically recycle this building area. And fact number three, after a very thoughtful one and a half hours of discussion about, the Planning Commission did vote yes. Now I would just like to briefly look at some of the what-if scenarios that have been brought up over the last couple of meetings. One is, the biggest question is, what do we want for 11 Mile? Do we want it to be completely residential? Again, I go back to fact number two, and that is that this business, there is a business that is allowed on the property right now. Also, I'm not sure when the original vision was discussed, but I am guessing it is a different time now. So property values have taken a steep drop. Many homes are up for sale and foreclosed upon right in this area. Does it really make sense to tear down a building in need of just cosmetic changes to build yet more houses? At a time when the city needs more viable small businesses and foreclosures and vacant homes filled, tearing down a property that a small business owner, me, wants to invest in and improve upon to make a part and improve the community, does that make a lot of sense? Or is that what you want for the area? Another expressed concern was, what if the business fails and we are left with a business that wants to expand upon the property? Again, I go back to that fact that this property is zoned for a care facility right now, and that could potentially happen. A daycare center could come in and expand. A church could decide they want to expand upon the place of worship. So it could potentially happen legally right now, that building could expand. Correct? Yes. Or a developer could clear out the space and build two-story homes that would most likely not match the rest of the houses on the block and most likely not add a lot of character or charm to this community that I see as quite charming. And number three, there are a lot of concerns that 11 Mile Road will become a hodgepodge of homes and businesses. In reality, whether this building remains a building or gets turned into homes, 11 Mile remains that hodgepodge, I believe I heard that term. There are many businesses currently along 11 Mile between Woodward and Coolidge, and to the majority of residents and commuters, drivers driving down that road, they're not aware of any division lines set up by the Planning Commission and the council. So they do not see these color-coded building plans. They see houses mixed with businesses, and that's it. And currently, they see this vacant, unusual piece of property that is devoid of this charm. What if that site sits there for years until the price gets so low they finally, finally a developer buys it? A developer's sole interest is building houses and then quickly getting out and leaving with the profit. That's not me. I'm interested in this community. I'm interested in my business, and I'm interested in the surrounding homes around it. I want this to be a nice fit for all, and I want to care for this property. So now I want you to imagine this. If you grant the rezoning, and in the summer of 2012, not very far away, when you drive down 11 Mile and you see this nice little building that looks quite charming and finally fits in with 11 Mile, you can say to yourself, "I made a nice decision."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional discussion? Councilmember Stedman?
Just that I'm willing to go ahead and take a chance on this. I think it's good.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Kadekell?
I've been thinking about this since the last time we met, and I thank you for coming out here again tonight, but seeing that there have not been any homes, family homes, constructed on this property in 40 years, it's been tax-exempt status for 29 years, and the building is just sitting there, doing nothing, I have decided that I am going to support this, especially with all the six, seven builders that we have in our area right now, and not one of them has even approached that property to build new homes. So I will be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Terbrack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last time we spoke about this, I kind of blindsided somebody, Commissioner Martin Smith, and I asked him to give his opinion as a Planning Commission member, and the chairman wasn't here, but the chairman's here today. So I'm curious, Mr. Chairman, do you have anything you'd like to add before we vote on this? It doesn't look like it, though.
I understand that it's been empty. The land's been vacant for quite a while, and the Planning Commission agreed 7 to 2. There were two dissenting votes, and it was me and Mr. Smith who dissented on the votes. I understand when it's been vacant like the time you've stated. What scares me the most about it is, at this point, we have a viable client who wants to occupy the space for some given time, maybe 10, 20 years, who knows? Still, when you rezone a piece of land, it goes forever until somebody decides to do something else with it. And the Planning Commission has been kicking around the dilemma of 11 Mile to the west, where we've got a mixed bag of businesses, residential housing streamed together. It's all integrated. Yes, it sort of all functions, but the Planning Commission is still toying with the idea of, well, how do we zone that whole piece of lot, all those lots along there? We haven't come to a real good consensus of what to do. What bothers me most about this is that it becomes a spot zoning with residents on the west, residents on the east, residents on the north. Some of the Planning Commission discussed the idea of, well, it faces Scotia, and that this isn't a good site for residents. To be honest with you, I really don't see residents...
There were two dissenting votes, and it was me and Mr. Smith who dissented on the votes. I understand when it's been vacant like the time and you've stated. What scares me the most about it is, at this point, we have a viable client who wants to occupy the space for some given time. Maybe 10, 20 years, who knows? Still, when you rezone a piece of land, it goes forever until somebody decides to do something else with it. And the Planning Commission has been kicking around the dilemma of 11 Mile to the west, where we've got a mixed bag of businesses, residential housing streamed together. It's all integrated. Yes, it sort of all functions, but the Planning Commission is still toying with the idea of, well, how do we zone that, that whole piece of lots, all those lots along there? We're still, we haven't come to a real good consensus of what to do. What bothers me most about this is that it becomes a spot zoning with residents on the west, residents on the east, residents on the north. Some of the Planning Commission discuss the idea of, well, it faces Scotia, and that this isn't a good, a good site for residents. To be honest with you, I really don't see residential housing there. I wouldn't, to me, that's not a good, good use for it. But for townhouses, and that's something where we all, this city, is lacking, and it's something that we really need, yet we've had a couple developers come with ideas, but nothing has gelled in the, with the economy where it is at the moment. So I see that there is four lots there. There's the potential of somebody coming along and maybe picking up adjacent lots that would permit townhouses to go in there within, if, in economic manner, that you could make it work. You've got to start with four. And that was sort of my reasoning why I didn't support. I did, I don't like the idea of spot zoning, and I see the potential for something else down the road. Now, how so far down the road is that? I don't know. It's going to be when the economy turns. Is the economy beginning to turn? Well, it depends on who you talk to. I could bring 100 economists in here, and we'd get 100 different ideas of exactly what's going to happen with the economy. But there seems to be some movement. So that sort of reflected why and how I voted on it. Again, I have to remind you that the Planning Commission, nine members, seven of them approved it, two did not. So you asked me my opinion, you end up knowing how I got to where I did. That's how I got there. Did I answer your question for you?
Yes. Thank you very much, Chairman Barnett. I've been struggling, like I think many councilmembers have, with this, this question on, you know, do we look down the road, you know, at what might happen, or do we take the opportunity that we have, you know, right now? The thing that, you know, I voted no last time, again, not against the business. The business, I think it's a great business idea, very supportive of the business idea, it's just the location that concerns me. I, I don't want to get into, as you mentioned, spot zoning, because 11 Mile, there are a lot of different parcels where we could start spot zoning things, and I don't want to get into that. I don't, I'm not going to change my vote from last time, but I want to be clear to you, and again, thank you for coming out. I'm not voting against your business at all. Not at all. I, I'd love to see your business in Berkeley. It's just the location and the zoning and the future use that concerns me at that spot. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Plaid Onson.
For me, same thing. Zoning and then what inevitably has to come after this for this business to go into this space, which is a special land use, is long-term. This isn't about one business. This is about a section of land within Berkeley for the next 50 years, 100 years, whatever it may be. We have a, another look at the master plan next year. Perhaps the Planning Commission at that time is, you know, going to talk more about what their vision is for 11 Mile and how that might play out. But I think we can't look at, at this one business, which I think is great. And I've always spoke much about my support for small businesses. I've been doing all local shopping since before it was all the rage. But this is, this is for the long haul. This stays with the land, and I think that that needs to be the main thing we think about. And I don't know that, that office amongst these houses is, is the right answer for Berkeley long-term. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming out tonight. And Ms. Vanson, I have a couple of clarifying questions, if you don't mind. Thank you. If you could describe for me a little bit about the, the potential process where we go from here. Last time when we talked about this, I believe we discussed, at least lightly, the notion of, you know, would this be final, or would they need to do a special land use or anything like that? Could you describe a little bit of the process? If we were to proceed with this, what might happen for the business to actually move in?
For this particular business, if the property is successfully rezoned, the next step to put a vet's office in would be a special land use application. And they submit that. It goes for a public hearing to the Planning Commission. They submit a site plan showing what improvements they're going to make to the property as far as screening, walls, landscaping, if they're going to do anything to the outside of the building, anything like that. And then the Planning Commission, again, makes a recommendation regarding that specific use, a vet's office at this location, along with that particular site plan, and makes a recommendation to the city council. And you all would then deliberate on whether or not the special land use should be approved. Should it be approved with additional conditions? Should some of the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended be removed? Or, and then, or should it be denied? And so at that point, depending upon what happens, you either have a business that is going in, or if, for whatever reason, the application is, you don't feel appropriate, even if you think the zoning was appropriate, if you don't think that the special land use application is appropriate, you can deny it at that point. At that point, you will have property-zoned office without a would-be owner going into it.
As a, as a follow-up, also trying to balance the short-term with the long-term and the conversation about the, the master plan. So if we were to, again, to continue with the what ifs for just a moment, make this change tonight, during the master plan process, would there be discussion to revisit this again? And then how would that affect this property? Would they be grandfathered, or?
Well, they would be grandfathered, yes. Once you have a business in, they get to stay in. And if, for whatever reason, if the, if in five years, the council decides they want to change what the office zone allows, or if they want to preemptly rezone it, the business still gets to stay. It's only if it's vacant for six, six months and there is an intention of abandonment that, then it stops. And certainly, if, you know, this is changed and there's a new use, the Planning Commission would certainly look at that with the existing land use plan. That would change, and then they would look at making sure it all makes sense. I think the, a lot of the, we've talked about west of this, that a lot of the issue is, is that you have very different uses right next to each other. You have a single-family home, which is on one end of the spectrum as far as land uses go, and you have industrial uses right next to each other, and there's not sort of that rainbow. You have yellow and purple right next to each other, and it's very, it, there's conflicts then, because it is, it is so close. And that's what the Planning Commission, they don't want to take a business and say it's no longer allowed, and they don't want to take, rezone somebody's single-family home and say, "That's not going to be allowed anymore." And that, that's, that's the, the challenge with the area, the two blocks west of this particular parcel.
Excellent, thank you. So I certainly appreciate the, the nature of that challenge, and given the, the timing of the short-term and the long-term. And it is, it is quite an interesting situation here, when we see that we do have somebody that's stepping forward and is expressing some interest in doing something with that property. That's very compelling. And at the same time, given the rigors of the process and the, the steps ahead in this journey, there's, there's certainly no guarantees that it would make it all the way through. And then what would we do, given that situation, if we've, as you mentioned, if we turned it to office, and then, for whatever reason it didn't, this particular application didn't make it all the way through? I am glad to hear about the, the potential for the future with the, the master plan process. Certainly gives us a chance to at least have another go at that, of the whole 11 Mile stretch. But since we've just recently now, you know, talked about this piece, it'll be interesting to factor all of that back into the conversation as well. So certainly given us plenty to think about tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, my thoughts echo the notion of a challenge. I can see that the Planning Commission struggled with it from several perspectives, and my colleagues doing the same thing. This is, this is not an easy vote in the sense that there are goods on both sides here. I have limited tolerance for empty buildings. And this whole question of 40 years since there have been residential housing in that area suggests to me that that's not going to happen, for whatever reason. That's not likely to happen in the future. Either it's not ideal because of its location opposite Scotia, and the traffic coming up, shining lights into those homes, whatever the reasoning. How long would it remain empty? Were we to pass on this opportunity? Who knows? I will vote yes on this because I think we waited long enough on this parcel. Any other additional questions, thoughts before we vote?
Just, just one question from Ms. Vanson. Let's say in 10 years, this business goes out of business. Does the next business have to go through the special land use proposal?
Is it a vet?
Pardon me?
Is it a vet? Is it a veterinary office? Is the next business going to be a veterinary office?
No. Any other business?
It depends on what the zoning ordinance says. If it's an architectural office, no. If it's a doctor's office and they have enough parking, no. Although I'm not sure if they do. If it's a veterinary office, then, and they're going to change anything as far as having outdoor, any, if they're going to change it, then yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Then, Ms. Prince, please call the roll.
Turbrak?
No.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
No.
Stedman?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Prince, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-54-11, matter of authorizing amendment of the 2011-12 operating budget.
Is there a motion to approve R-54-11?
Motion to approve 54-11.
Support.
It has been moved by Mayor Protem Turbrak and supported by Councilmember Plaid Onson. Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, this item comes before you on a regular basis, and simply what this does is it makes sure that our budget is in balance, so to speak. And this is also done in accordance with Public Act II of 1986, as, as required for us to make certain amendments. What I'd like to do now is I'd like to ask our finance director to simply go over the, the amendments that he's recommending to the city council to consider. Mr. Subuda?
Thank you, Madam Manager. Mr. Mayor and city council members, good evening. Good to see you all. We, tonight, before you on this item, we have 21 amendments across six, six of the 25 operating funds. New spending, $38,250, and that's on a $20 million budget. So we are increasing spending here with all, with all the amendments. There's $15,415 affecting the general fund. So yes, you are increasing expenses. How much? By 38,250, and 15 of that is, 15,415 is in the general fund. The first item is, is the TIF. What we've got, $7,160 in new expenses, basically preliminary engineering and some sidewalk repair associated with the 12 Mile parking lot. Item B would be, of the water sewer fund, $4,700 for engineering work that was done in 9/10, that came to our attention late this year, that we are obligated to pay for, $4,700. Then the next item, there is a typo there on item C, general fund, it should be water sewer fund. Basically, there's $3,492. What's happening here is our IT coordinator, we hired a new IT coordinator this past July. He is finishing up the probationary period. It looks like he's going to be here. So we're amending the budget, and he's paid partially out of the water sewer fund, and what we're doing is we're picking up the additional expenses for him here. Item D is also the IT coordinator, the balance of his funding coming out of the general fund for $10,557, and that's wages and fringes, and that's the additional cost for that individual. Item E and F is for the recreation director, the new rec. director. He, again, is through his, is getting through his probationary period. It looks like he's going to stick. And at the end of the day, we're increasing his wages to meet what we've agreed to pay him, $4,858 out of the general fund, and another $4,850 out of the arena fund. Now, I'd like to point out on the arena fund, which is your item E, and remember, this is the increase, just the increase. The arena fund does not have the funds to pay for the increase. So what we're doing is we're taking monies from the rec. revolving fund and bringing it into the arena fund to properly have the, enough funds available to pay that, pay the director's salary there. Again, $4,858. Item F is the transfer out from rec. revolving. And then the final two amendments, a small one, $250 for our tri-party contribution for 12 Mile Road, which goes to Oakland County, $250. Then the last item is just a timing issue. We collected the dollars for amusement tickets in 10/11, but we actually are spending the money in 11/12, and the budget has to reflect that additional spending there for $2,375. So the finance department is recommending that all budget amendments as presented be approved. Happy to answer any and all questions.
Are there any questions for our finance director? Hearing none, then. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll on R-54-11?
Baker?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
Plaid Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrak?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Now, Ms. Prince, would you read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Discussion item, consideration of applicants for vacant city council seat.
Mr. Sessa.
Yes, Your Honor. Just so that everyone knows, what I'm going to do now is simply go over the applicant's application and give some information about, about each individual, and I'm just simply going to go by alphabetical order. The first applicant, and by the way, so you all know, we received a total of four applications for this position. Okay. The first individual is Mr. John C. Blanchard. He's also known as Jack, and he is a, he's a retired engineer. Just to give you a little description of his work history, first, he, he served in the United States Army. Of those years, 12 of them were on active duty, and 18 years were in the reserve until he retired in 1995 with a rank of Colonel. Then on the private sector, he worked for General Motors as a diesel engineer for 25 years, serving in various positions until he went up the ladder, as they say. And in 2001, he was appointed as the Assistant Chief Engineer for Diesel Programs, where he worked with various individual, individual engineering centers in Romulus, Michigan, and I hope I'm pronouncing this word correctly, Fuji Sawa, Japan, until he retired. He has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for over 30, 33 years. When asked the question, what are the interests and qualifications for, for this appointment, he states that he has served as a volunteer with the city's public safety department for over 27 years. He's also been very active with the Berkeley School District, having served on or chaired on the facilities committees from 1978 until 2008. He states that Berkeley is an excellent city and that he is very interested in helping with the continued growth of the city. On the, on the private side, he, he also states that he has managed programs that are in the multimillion-dollar level, and he's also very, very familiar with, with budgets. Also, he is a member of the Great Lakes Captain Association, which provides training on environmental issues and the EPA. When asked the question to list other information that he feels is pertinent to assist the city council in this election, he indicates that he has managed numerous facilities for the U.S. Army in various types of programs in the million-dollar level for General Motors. He's also received numerous honors and awards. Under the public sector side, he has been honored by the South Oakland Family YWCA as Volunteer of the Year. Also, the Metropolitan Detroit YMCA has also made him the Volunteer of the Year. Both himself and his wife were PTA Citizens of the Year '84, '85. He was also honored by the city's Public Safety Department with a civilian commendation in 2007. In 1983, he also received, let's see, numerous, well, let me go back, not 1983. He also received numerous awards, military awards, and I'm not going to go through all of them because they are so numerous to mention, but certainly he, he received of them because they are so numerous to mention, but certainly he, um, he received, uh, outstanding commendations, uh, during his times of service, various, uh, military awards and, uh, Council, as you know, you, I'm sure you can read them in, um, in his application. And then also, um, I'd like to mention that he is currently, uh, part owner of a Marine, a diesel, uh, engine consulting firm. He's also completed, uh, various classes, uh, that also keep them informed with the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Again, numerous, numerous classes, um, with FEMA. Uh, he does this all on his own. He's also done some training with the National Emergency Response and Rescue Training Center. Uh, he's also been to the National Fire Academy, and he's also done, he's also gone to some classes at the U.S. Department of Energy. And again, they're too, too numerous to mention, but certainly, um, uh, he, uh, this information is available, City Council, for you to, to read in more detail, and also to the press. That information is also available to you as well. Okay, that is, uh, that is Mr. John or Jack Blanchard. The next person is, um, Mr. Mark F. Heron. Is that correct, sir? Thank you. Okay, um, Mr. Heron is an attorney and a professional investigator. Just to give you a little background about his work history, he has, uh, a varied experience both on the, uh, public and, and private sector side. He has worked as a reserve officer for Lathrop Village, and he's also worked as a police officer in Dallas, Texas. He feels that he has worked, um, with the, with the public in the law enforcement capacity. As an attorney, he has worked as a practicing and managing attorney since 2003, and he is also a licensed professional investigator and adjunct instructor of, of, uh, criminal justice and security. He has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for 11 years and six months. When asked the question, what are your interests and qualifications for this appointment, he states that he is interested in, uh, serving the citizens of Berkeley, and he would like to help guide, uh, this wonderful community forward. He believes that Berkeley is a great place to live and raise a family, and he would like to contribute his efforts to make Berkeley, uh, even better. Additionally, he indicates that other qualifications include a bachelor's degree from MSU, a Juris Doctor degree also from MSU, a Master of Laws from WSU. He also feels that he has skills as a manager, uh, problem solver and communicator. When asked the question to list other information he feels would be pertinent in assisting the City Council in their selection, he states that both he and his wife are raising four children in Berkeley. He also feels that, um, because he has his, uh, his business here in Berkeley, they are based in Berkeley, he has a law practice and a private in, investigation company which is based in Berkeley. He is very committed to the continued progress of this community. That is, uh, Mr. Mark Heron. Spare with me just a little bit, please. Next, uh, we have, uh, Mr. Ryan Lawson. He is an IT contracts lawyer. Uh, when it comes to, uh, his work history, um, he too has worked, uh, both, uh, in the, uh, in the public and, and private side. He began his, uh, career in, uh, in government in 1998, uh, while still attending the Michigan Technological University. While in school, he enlisted in the, uh, United States Coast Guard Reserve, and he served there until he was honorably discharged in 2006. After he graduated from the Michigan Tech, he started a, uh, a corporate, he started, I guess he says he started the corporate world as a computer technician, um, with a, with the private sector. And then from there, he, um, he went on from 2001 to 2004, where he worked in the court system, and he, uh, he did some clerking for, uh, Judge Michael Maritone in, uh, in the Troy District Court, and then for Judge Mark Goldsmith in the Oakland County Circuit Court. And then after he left, um, working in, with the courts, he also worked in education, serving as a Director of Technology at Brother Rice, Brother Rice High School from 2004 to 2010. From there, he went on to, uh, work for the private sector for Ford, where he was responsible for, uh, where he is responsible, and that's what he's doing right now, I apologize, negotiating and drafting, uh, technological contracts. He says that his current position focuses on bringing people together to make sure that everyone, both on Ford, Ford's side and the supplier's side, is, uh, is aligned as to what is, what is being delivered, and to make sure that the contracts are written in such a way that minimizes risk to Ford while reflecting the consensus of services. When asked the question, what are your interests and qualifications for this position, uh, he states that he, um, he has tried to lead a life of service, and he currently serves, uh, the city of Berkeley through many roles. One is as the Vice Chair of the Communications Advisory Committee, and also as a member of the Environmental Advisory Committee. He, he states that he feels that his education experience and working with government, as well as his experience in business, um, is a natural fit for the position here as a, uh, on the City Council. He, uh, he also feels that he would provide valuable input on setting policy and writing the laws of the city of Berkeley. He feels that because he grew up in Oakland County, um, and he has a great love for Berkeley, that he has decided to buy his first home in Berkeley. He believes that Berkeley is a wonderful community and, uh, that through dedicated service, um, he can help it grow. He has been attending, um, City Council meetings, and so he feels that he understands how the City Council administers. In addition, he has experience in managing budgets and, uh, again, uh, ranging, uh, from the hundred, hundred thousand to 200,000, uh, level range. Now, as a, as a Director of Technology at, at Brother Rice. And now, he's worked up to the 90 million level, uh, where he's currently working at Ford. So he has a, a very wide experience in that area. Also, he, because he's worked as a government employee, he understands the stresses and pressures that are placed on government employees, um, and also with their interactions, uh, with the public. Uh, he feels that, uh, as, uh, his current job, he, he believes that, uh, uh, part of it is to bring, uh, people together, and he feels that unlike, uh, many attorneys who work in an adversarial role, he feels that he works in a collaborative manner. And, uh, he also feels that his experience in working in education will also help, uh, bring, uh, the city together with the Berkeley School District and perhaps reexamine and explore other ways in which we can work together. When asked, uh, the question about, uh, listing other information that he feels would be pertinent in assisting the City Council in their selection, um, he states that, I suppose, when, uh, when Mayor Stefan and Councilmember Betton stepped down, he felt that, uh, several people spoke about the civility of the City Council. While he doesn't claim to know all of the members here at, at City Council, he feels that he has at least a, a civil relationship with all of those that are, that are currently serving, and he hopes to come to the City Council and with the same friendly relationship that has been enjoyed by the City Council in the past. Uh, and lastly, he states that he truly loves Berkeley, that since moving here, he has also convinced other, uh, family members to move to the city, and he will continue those efforts. He thinks city is the, he thinks that the city of Berkeley is a great city with the potential to become even greater, and would like to play, um, a part in shaping that future of the city of Berkeley. Then we have, uh, Mr. Gary Polk. Um, Mr. Gary Polk is a Technician's Solution Rep. Just to give you a little background about his work history, uh, he has worked, uh, in HP and EDS, um, in various positions. Uh, he currently works with the GM dealers, um, resolving their computer system issues as well as their vehicle programming issues. Uh, his past experience in EDS includes, uh, program management, asset management, uh, facilitating PC refreshes, uh, request fulfillment and customer fulfillment. His, uh, work experience prior to EDS was sales and customer service, uh, selling design supplies. He has been a resident of the city of Berkeley for 24 years, or as he states, since 1987. When asked the question, what are your interests and qualifications for this appointment, he states that he has been a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board since 1998. He is currently the Vice Chairman, and he has also, uh, been chosen as the Chairman and Secretary in that same, uh, committee or board. He has also served on the Dream Cruise, Dean, he's also served on the Dream Cruise Advisory Ad Hoc Committee. He states that he loves living in Berkeley and is very interested in helping to keep the city thriving, even during these tough economic times. And, uh, I believe that is all that he states.
Thank you, Mr. Sessa.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Now, I would like to give the opportunity to the candidates to, uh, come to the microphone for up to five minutes to, well, whatever amount of time you want, uh, to, uh, give us a sense of your vision for Berkeley and for the future of our town. We have seen and, and heard and studied what you have accomplished, and it is formidable. Uh, but if you would maybe give us a sense of your vision for the city, and we will also continue the alphabetical order. Mr. Blanchard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sure won't need five minutes. I got one card here.
That's fine.
I would just like to say, after being here 33 years, that Berkeley is a very well-run city. Uh, you can tell that by, you should read the paper and you see all the crisis in Royal Oak, Ferndale, all the other cities, but when you look at, you know, there's no crisis in the city of Berkeley. We are, we're ahead of the park, or we've got things done ahead of time, and we're moving on, and we're doing it right. What we need to do now is just keep that going. Uh, my vision, uh, for the city is to continue to address the changing need of the community because the community constantly rolls over. In my neighborhood, 33 years ago, we moved in with a five-year-old son, and we were young ones on the block, and now? We're the old ones on the block! But it's been a continual change. It's moved smoothly. Everybody gets along well, and we have a gr, a great time, and that's going to continue to happen, and I'd like to make sure that continues to happen. We've got to look out for the young people that are coming up. Things, times are changing, uh, technology's changing. We've just got to get a program that will make, listen to the views of the young people, do what they think they need to keep everything going smoothly, to, to roll the city along rather well. Uh, I've got two grandchildren in school district in Berkeley, and I want to make sure that the, uh, city and the school district is there to support them and give them, you know, the quality of a place to live that I've had. I also think that my engineering background and program management, ma, program management background, I can't speak very well, but, uh, will be an asset to the board. I've managed a number of programs, uh, in 30 years in the Army and 28 years at GM. I've been through a lot of budgets and a lot of, uh, things like that, so I think I can help you out. But we need, we need to move the city forward continuously. We need to look at new parks, recreation, we need to look at all aspects of the city to make sure that, that it goes there. I think we've done a great job. I'm sorry I didn't make the last meeting to congratulate, uh, Mayor Stefan because she did a fine job, and, and Dan Betton also, so. So all I got to say, um, hopefully I can be an asset to the Council if you appoint me.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Heron?
Good evening, Mayor O'Dwyer, uh, and Council Members. Um, I prepared remarks, but since you've taken me in another direction, that's where I'll go. As far as my vision for the city, I'm a father of four kids, and obviously paramount to me is my kids growing up in a safe community. That's one of the things that attracted us, my wife and I, to come and make this our home. We plan on making it our home for quite a long time. Um, I want my kids to be able to walk in the community unmolested. Uh, I see Chief Eschman standing over there. Knowing that I like to be able to let my kids go out and play basketball at the, at the school. I live down near La Salette. They should be able to walk around as they see fit. They should be able to ride their bikes. We shouldn't be worried that something's going to happen to them. And right now, I don't worry, and that's what I'd like to continue. The other thing that I'd like to see happen is the continuation of a cohesive plan for businesses in this community. There was a discussion this evening along 11 Mile, we don't want to do, uh, spot zoning. I think that's a good thing, that we don't do that, because we're, we're just now, it seems to me, in the time that I've lived here, 11-plus years, getting a, a kind of a continuity to Coolidge, getting a continuity to businesses on 12 Mile, to improve the walkability for the citizens. If we live here, we'd like to stay here. We'd like to walk, get a coffee, maybe have some lunch, meet a friend, and socialize with our neighbors. Those are all very general ideas. Obviously, I understand the restraints and constraints of working within a budget as a small business owner. It's a very practical approach to business. I don't spend other people's money. I have to worry about the assets that I put in, so I'm very aware when I do consider spending the taxpayers' money. It's not mine, it's entrusted to me if I were to be selected. And it's important to keep that in mind in every decision that's made. Whether I'm selected or not, as a citizen, I'd like to see this Council continue to consider the financial concerns of this community. I think we're on the right track, and I think you've done a great job. And, uh, I believe it was, uh, at the last meeting that, uh, former Mayor Stefan said that this is a council that gets things done, and I'd like to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, uh, did something I've never done today. I actually sat down and I wrote a speech. I always like cue cards, and, so I wrote this really nice speech, and for your sake, I'm not going to give it. I'd like to think that, that people here know me, that I've, that I've been around, I've been coming to Council meetings and seeing what you do. And I, I see the issues that are facing Berkeley today. In terms of what's in our future, we face shared state revenue issues. We face a potential loss of the business personal property tax. I think we need to do things to come together with other cities as mandated by the Governor for shared efficiencies of services. What's my vision of Berkeley in the future? I'd like to see us come together with our neighboring communities, with Huntington Woods, with Oak Park, um, maybe even with other fire departments in the area. Um, but to come together with other communities and build bridges and to see what we can do to increase services to our citizens, to keep the great services we have here today. Um, that's one thing I love about Berkeley. We have such great city services. I know not every resident agrees, but you know, it's great. I think to be able to rake the leaves out into the street, to not have to bag them, I like us to be able to continue some of these things. One thing I've noticed about Berkeley is we have great restaurants, we have wonderful stores, we've even got some industry in Berkeley. We don't have a lot of entertainment. We have bowling alley. I'd love to see us, in terms of when we look ahead with a coherent plan, define where we want to be as a city. What do we want to do to bring people to Berkeley? We have to develop our small businesses. They're a wonderful asset that we have. It gives us character. We want to walk around 12 Mile. We want to walk around Coolidge. But we also have to make sure that we're an inviting community. We can bring people in and make them want to then, okay, I'm coming here for entertainment, let me then go to a restaurant, let me shop at a store, let's make it so that people will want to come here. Also, so we can have a walkable community, so we can have streets where it's not just cars, where residents can bike or walk from their houses up to our downtown areas on Coolidge and 12 Mile. I think we need to, we need to pull together and kind of work on that real coherent city plan. We've done some work on Greenfield in the last couple of years. I think 11 Mile, the, the City Planning Commission is, I'm, I'm going to bet that's the next real big job they tackle, is what do we do with that stretch of 11 Mile? Um, one of the last things Mayor Stefan said before she stepped down was, "Our aim must be to do what is best for Berkeley." And I think I can join the Council and, and keep that in mind. I believe in service. I believe in service. I believe that a council, I, I can't remember who said this. I heard a quote a few years ago that said, in a mature society, all too often, public servant is equated with public master. And I don't think that's the case in Berkeley. I think we serve our citizens, and I want to be a part of that service. I've lived a life of service. My mother is a volunteer director. My father's worked for the government in service, and they've kind of given me this, this value of service, that I think I would like to continue on the Berkeley City Council. I, I know the city. I know its processes. I know how it works, and I think I can, I can be an asset, and as I said, I can hit the ground running, because I know what you're doing. I know the challenges ahead, and I think I have some vision as to where we can go with some of those challenges.
Thanks, Mr. Lawson. Mr. Pope.
Thank you. I do want to thank the city council for considering me and inviting me to speak. I also want to thank Mayor O'Dwyer for giving us a little, throwing us a little bit of a curve. I think we all plan to talk about our qualifications, and I'm sort of glad that, that, you know, we have a chance to think and to lead this in a little bit of a different direction. My vision for Berkeley, and I'm going to go past the, the immediate needs for revenue and, and the challenges coming up in the near future. I think my vision for Berkeley is to continue to grow and thrive in a family manner. I want to see a new generation of young families. I'm starting to see that on my block. I've lived, and this is my second house in Berkeley, and I've lived there for, since 1991. And at first, there were several young families. And then, until the last couple of years, Halloween was almost getting depressing, how few kids we were, we were getting. But over the last two or three years, as prices have gone down and Berkeley's become more affordable, especially compared, in comparison to the rest of the area, I'm seeing more young families, more cute kids, and really enjoying it. I'm seeing them play. I'm, I, our particular neighborhood is becoming more family-friendly again. And that's the direction I want to see Berkeley grow. I want to see, as a government, us remember the two groups who need us the most, the young and the seniors. My wife is currently doing work as a senior care, and I see a large opportunity for us in the future to really work with, to continue to work with our seniors. I want to see Berkeley, as far as businesses, I want, I want, I do want to have a unified downtown, a unified plan, as we've been doing as far as Coolidge and 12 Mile. I don't really want to see us become a Royal Oak or Ferndale. I don't want us to think in those terms. I want us to, to be almost quaint, not small, but quaint. I want us to almost think, yeah, I want us to have a general vision, but a vision where families can go out, enjoy a meal, enjoy a walk-around, enjoy something to do, enjoy a dish of ice cream or a dessert, and not be threatened, and just to keep our downtown area as a family-friendly area. As far as the challenges, as far as 11 Mile, that's going to be, I do want to see a unified plan. I would like to see it somehow. The one thing we really lack is a lot of industrial facilities. We do have some, and of course, that's going to be a challenge, but to be, you know, to be a full city, we probably need a combination of both industrial, business, and residential. So, I want to see us grow. I'd like to see some multifamily in there, too. And of course, as every, as my, the other candidate said, I do want to see us, I do want to encourage small business. I would really like this to be the most friendly city for small businesses in the area. So, I think that's pretty much it. Again, I do want to consider, I do want to thank you for considering me, and I also want to say that I think our city is very lucky to have four people as qualified, or maybe I should say the three other people as qualified as they are. Again, I want to thank you. I want to thank my wife for putting up with me, especially the last few days, and I want to wish, I want to wish the fellow candidates good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. And let me correct you, Mr. Pope. There are four outstanding candidates. One of the great assets of this city resides in the residents and the people of this city. When four people can step forward with a spirit of generosity and a willingness to serve the community, people of extraordinary talent, we are a blessed community. This is not going to be an easy vote, an easy decision. Members of council have had four or five days or more to review the resumes. They have had an opportunity now to listen to each candidate. I know that many of the candidates are personal friends of members of the council. The decision we have before us, to quote again Mayor Stefan, what is best for Berkeley as we see it, we have to make this call in the best interest of the community. Let me ask my colleagues, are you in a position at this time to make a decision on your first choice? Do you have in your mind a first choice? While we have a consensus, at least, that there are folks with first choices. It will take four votes, it will take four votes for this appointment to occur. So, with that, then, unless there's any final question, I will ask Ms. Prince to read item number six.
Motion number M-65-11, matter of appointment to fill the current vacancy on city council.
Is there a motion to appoint a member to city council to a term expiring November Councilmember Stedman.
First of all, I would like to say that I echo your statements, that we have four wonderful candidates, isn't that, that is really terrific. And unfortunately, we can only choose one tonight. I would encourage all of you to get involved, stay involved, run for office, but stay involved with the city of Berkeley. However, I would like to nominate for a couple of reasons, and I'll state that in a minute, Jack Blanchard for the position of appointed city council member. Some of the reasons are, first of all, he's been a lifetime volunteer in this city, both for the school district and for the city of Berkeley. He's had longevity. And also, another reason is because he's had a strong relationship with the Public Safety Department, and this is a time when, when this relationship with our Public Safety Department can be very important, because it's a time when we're exploring shared services with other cities, and I think that's a very good thing to have on our city council. So, with that, I nominate Jack Blanchard, John C. Blanchard, for the position of city, city council member.
Is there a second for Mr. Blanchard?
Support.
Support by Mr. Kadek.
May I say something, Mayor?
Sure can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, too, want to thank each and every one of you for coming out here tonight. I've been in some of your shoes before, standing at, at that podium, and it's not always easy. But I encourage all of you to continue working for this great city. All of you are qualified, or more than qualified, to sit up here with us. And I know, again, from personal experience, that perseverance and continued work, working for the city doesn't mean sitting up here. There's a lot of great volunteers out there, working for the city. I've had the honor of sitting on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with Mr. Pope. I've been, I've seen Mr. Lawson. I've been around Mr. Blanchard. Mr. Heron, I'm sorry I don't know you, but I feel that you're equally as qualified. But when I read the resume, I've read novels shorter than Mr. Blanchard's resume, and I think he will be a great asset as part of our council, so that's why I'm supporting him. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on Mr. Blanchard? Hearing, hearing, oh, Mr. Beck?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, just to, to continue the conversation here, I'd also like to, to express my gratitude to, to everyone who came forward with their applications, not only taking the time to, to pay attention to what's been going on, to seeking their opportunities to help be a part of this, to, to coming before us tonight, sharing their visions of the city, which were, which are very compelling indeed. We are indeed most fortunate to have this wonderful set of candidates here, who I, again, echo the, the comments and hope that will continue all that they can and will do on behalf of the city. As I think about the vision, a lot of that has been painted in a very consistent manner. I appreciate the, the shared appreciation for the recent past that we've gone through together here and the, the challenges that await us, so I'd feel comfortable with, with any of the candidates. I also will be supporting Mr. Blanchard tonight as well. Again, because I, what, part of what I like about it is, in addition to the, the extensive background, I appreciate the diversity of perspective that he would bring, the, the support with the public safety, I do believe is important, the handling from start to finish of processing of very large programs, projects, facilities work, I think is an important part of what a municipality can provide to help create a context within which those businesses can flourish and grow. I think that's very important. I also like the, the vision of planning for the future, leading from the future as it, as it emerges here, right, and, and the notion of listening to all the voices out there, both experienced and young here as we move forward. I was really pleased to hear that, again, from all the folks. But, but with that, again, thank you, everybody, for, for coming out and for helping be a part of this, and I look forward to working with all of you, again, in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, everyone who's spoken to this point has, you know, said how much they, we thank the people for coming out, and for people watching in the audience, or for people, even the candidates sitting in the chairs, you might think that we're just, you know, paying you lip service because you did this, and it's, it's the politically correct thing to do. We're not. We're extremely serious. We were, at least I was worried, that maybe we wouldn't have anybody want to, you know, apply for something like this in this economy. It's, it's not exactly, you get a lot of complaints, and that's, especially right now. That's something that we deal with, and, you know, we just had an election, and we had candidates run unopposed. That is what scared me. I, I was wondering if we would have people that were willing to take on the tremendous challenges that, that we have before us, and, you know, maybe, I thought maybe we'd have one candidate, or possibly even two, but we, we do have four, and we have four quality candidates that any of them would fit up here and work well with the council. And I know that all of you certainly have the best interests of Berkeley in mind. You know, as Councilmember Kadek said, and the mayor alluded to, we know, we have personal relationships with some of you, some of you we don't know as well. We certainly would like to get to know you a little bit better, but it's, it's almost more difficult, I think, doing it this way than getting elected, when you've got 2,000 people that you can go out and campaign to. You've got, you know, six people up here right now. There are four candidates, and as the mayor alluded to, you know, to get selected, you need four votes. We've already heard from, from three members. So, from that standpoint, you know, I want to, I can't express enough how sincere I am in thanking the four of you that stepped forward and are willing to take on this. You all spoke eloquently. You spoke passionately. It's obvious that you care about the city of Berkeley. Only one of you will, will be up here, you know, for the next two years, but, you know, some of you are already involved. Please continue to stay involved. If you're not as involved, get more involved. Don't stop fighting for the city of Berkeley, whether it's up here, whether it's down there, whether it's on the street, whether it's with your family, your friends, just don't stop fighting for the city of Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing none, then. Ms. Prince, would you please call the role?
Kadek.
Yes.
Platt Onson.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrick.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Ian O'Dwyer.
Yes.
Thank you all. Thank you, council, for your deliberation and your review of this difficult decision. Thank you for the people who came forward. We want you to continue, those who are not chosen, in the wonderful work that you do for the city as it is. And now, we come to the final item on the agenda, which is communications.
It would start with Councilmember Platt Onson.
Councilmember Platt Onson, you're first up.
This may be incredibly shocking, but I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kadek.
This won't be shocking. I have a few things to say. First of all, I want to thank and congratulate Chelsea Ruthenberg for filling the vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. As I just mentioned a few minutes ago, volunteerism in this city is great, and we can always use more. And as we just said also, that tonight, we heard a lot of great ideas. Please keep them in mind, and please keep in touch with us on those. Congratulations to Councilmember Appointee Blanchard. I look forward to working with you. This Saturday, this past Saturday, was my first Holiday Lights Parade as a council member, and I want to congratulate the Berkeley Junior Women's Club and the Holiday Committee for putting on such a great program. We even had a little rain there, so no snow, but Santa managed to make it through. I, this past week's been a pretty busy week for me. First and foremost, I want to thank Ms. Byste Sessa for meeting with me and allowing me to meet with the staff. I have met with everybody individually, from Mr. Schuler, Judge Wittenberg, Ms. Prince, Mr. Caldwell, Ms. Vanson, Chief Eschman, and Deputy Chief North, Mr. Sabuda, Ms. Line, Mr. O'Neill, Ms. McCarleton, Mr. Schneider, and I thank each and every one of them. And when Ms. Morse gets back from her vacation, I'll be meeting with her. But I want the people of Berkeley to know, I want all of you to know, how fortunate we are to have the staff that we have, to take the time to work with us, to work for the city. It happened on Tuesday that I was meeting at eight in the morning with Mr. Schuler, the director of DPW. Well, if any of you remember, we were having another downpour, and we took a ride around the city, and our DPW employees, it's not just the sta, the directors, it's our staff, their, our employees, were out there in the rain, trying to, you know, alleviate some of the water in the streets. It doesn't get better with our court services. While I was across the street at the Public Safety Department, the, the bell went off. And how quick our public safety officers move. We are very fortunate in this city to have the court services and the people working for them, and I thank them. And finally, the VFW located on Coolidge, Post 922, 9222, is having a pancake breakfast this Saturday, December 10th, from eight to 11 at the post. It's located at 3025 Coolidge. It's the Marine Corps League will be hosting this event, and they ask that you bring a toy for tats for this event. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I spoke at length on the last item, so I'm not going to readdress my feelings on that. I would like to thank all of the volunteers, Paul Swayze, Cindy Coon, everybody involved in the Berkeley Holiday Lights Parade, the junior women. It truly is just one of the best nights to be in Berkeley. I mean, the, the Dream Cruise is, is great. It's its own special way, but when you have Santa coming down and all the and all the kids out there for the parade, everybody that's involved, so many members of the city, you know, walking in the parade, sponsoring banners, that's what makes this community so special. We're all very lucky to be a part of a city that, you know, other cities have parades, but it's not the same feel. You know, you know so many people, and all the kids. I couldn't believe how many kids were just ready to sit on Santa's lap, because he barely got off the sleigh. He didn't even get the key to the city yet, the key to the chimneys in the City of Berkeley, or the hearts to the children. They were ready. That's great, and I'm just very honored, wanted to be up here with these people, with my fellow colleagues, of course, with Mr. Blanchard in the future. I'm just very proud to be a Berkeley resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baker.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few quick things as well, and again, thanks again to everybody who's stepped forward in all the variety of capacities to help the city, and I look forward to serving with you, Mr. Blanchard. Thank you. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, meets next week's Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning to continue its business. And speaking of business, this past Thursday, December 1st, was the Coolidge Collection of Businesses' First Tuesdays. It's a new initiative to help drive some visibility and some business and some awareness around our Coolidge Collection, and I thought that was a terrific idea, and I'd like to thank all of those involved, and there's 15 businesses involved, for the first First Thursday, and look forward to future ones as well. Given the First Thursday motif, they'll have different monthly themes, you know, a New Year's theme, and Valentine's, and those kinds of things. So I think that's fantastic, and so celebrate that as well. Our Historical Committee, in the spirit of giving thanks, thanks to all those involved who helped decorate the museum, who helped expertly guide a tour of 22 seniors from the Methodist Church came through last week, and gave them a tour through the museum and helped answer questions, and then also extended their holiday hospitalities at the end of the parade. The museum was open for additional questions and time. And so, speaking of the parade, again, thanks, I echo my colleagues' comments about the splendor of the Holiday Lights Parade, thanks to all involved, the committee, the junior women's, the businesses, the residents, all the volunteers that helped make it such a success. It was a terrific event, and it was, it made me proud as well. And in fact, made me think of a quote from Robert Braut, who was a Michigan-born operatic singer. And so I thought of this as we were walking, quite honestly, and said, "Enjoy the little things. For one day, you may look back and realize they were big things." And again, that was, "Enjoy the little things. For one day, you may look back and realize they were big things." And of course, this, a little thing like the parade makes a big difference to a lot of folks. And on a side note, in gratitude to the equestrian escorts who helped make sure that, as we looked back, we didn't see any big things behind us as well, so. So with that, I'd like to thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Stedman.
I would just like to thank the people involved with the Holiday Lights Parade. It was wonderful, again, this year. It was a little warmer than it's been in the past, when, you know, we couldn't even stay outside, but, so it was a very nice night. And thank you to the Holiday Lights Committee, and to the Junior Women's Club, and anybody else who had anything to do with the parade. And also, congratulations to our new council appointee, new councilmember Blanchard, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Mr. Sessa.
Just a few things, Your Honor. I, too, want to express my appreciation to the Berkeley Junior Women's Club and the Holiday Parade Committee. They did an awesome job. It was so much fun. I really enjoyed it. I guess the spirit of Christmas was kind of starting there, so it was a lot of fun. It was beautiful. As for the weather, councilmember, I respectfully disagree. I loved it as a native Texan. It was perfect, perfect weather, so thank you so much. You know, as the city manager, part of my job, obviously, is to work with the City Council, and I know that my responsibility is to implement the policies and the rules that are set forth by the City Council. So having said that, tonight, as I listen to each of the four candidates that came up, although I know a few of you, because we worked on some other committees, I have to tell you that, as a city administrator, is very, 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 very pleased and very impressed with each of you. I think each of you did an excellent job, and as the council has stated, I hope that those of you that are in committees and things like that, that you continue. Those of you that are not, I'm hoping that you will meet with me, or with other members of the City Council, to talk about perhaps getting involved in some committees for the City of Berkeley, and then, and to congratulate each and every one of you. Excellent, as a city administrator. Very, very good. And also, to say to Mr. Blanchard that we need to meet, and we need to talk, and get all kinds of information so that we can get started, and then, at the next council meeting, the city clerk will be swearing you in at that point, but I will give you a call, and we'll set up a meeting, and we'll begin the training. So it is just begun, as they say. So with that, thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Sessa. Mr. Sabuda.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider.
I'll give it a shot, Your Honor. Congratulations, Mr. Blanchard. I'm going to be looking forward to working with you. Truthfully, after I read all of the resumes, I don't think there was a, well, I think your resume was so outstanding, but let me tell you, you had a lot of competition. I think each and every individual that stood at the podium tonight did themselves, did their family, and did Berkeley proud. I thought any one of the applicants would have been a fine addition to the council. That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Schneider. Well said. Just to reiterate what has been said already, the Holiday Lights Parade was a delight. It was just, it was so nice to be so close to Santa Claus, watching the little children and their eyes just glazing over, being so close to him. It had a magical quality, and all of the effort of so many volunteers from the Parade Committee, to the Junior Women's Club, and all the other volunteers, it makes it all worthwhile to see the joy in the children's eyes. And to continue that same joy, there is Breakfast with Santa this Saturday at Our Lady of La Salle's School from 9:00 until 12:00, noon. So it was an opportunity for people to get reacquainted with Santa and correct any misunderstandings you may have about what to deliver. I had the opportunity on Saturday to attend a leadership summit on revitalizing Michigan, and I heard a number of wonderful presentations, but one speaker was Mr. Doug Smith, Vice President of Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and senior advisor, of course, to the governor with regard to economic development. And he made one important point that I took away from that meeting. He talked about our companies and our communities have brought competitiveness to a fine art. Anywhere in the world, we can compete with anybody, anyplace. But he said, "The future will rest with those who can create a collaborative model that can work together more collaboratively and less competitively." And applying that within the context of municipalities and community agreements and regional agreements, I think the message is clear that we need to be more collaborative going forward and less competitive, so that the rising tide lifts all ships and it doesn't become a race to the bottom. Congratulations to Mr. Blanchard. Congratulations to all of those who put their resumes in and their applications in. It is a form of service just to put your name in. It takes a level of courage to present yourself for appointment when there's one seat. It takes great courage as well to put your name up for election in the community. And so I always am thankful for people who are willing to do these kinds of services for the community. Each and every one of you, your resumes and your personal passion spoke eloquently for all of you, and we are proud that you are residents of our town. On that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Ms. Councilman Kadek. Ms. Prince, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Platt Onson?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrick?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Kadek?
Yes.
And O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Meeting has been adjourned.